Okay, so I think we are ready to call the order. And that'll be called order at 7:04 PM. Just since we have a few more folks here than we have in the past, I think I'll go through quick attendance here before we jump in for Janie, so that she can get down everybody that we've got.
I got it already if you don't.
Got it already?
Yeah.
You're ahead of me. I will go through everybody, I think, as well, just so that Bettina knows who's all here. And we all know who's all here.
So Cal is missing and Matt is missing.
Matt was gonna try and he had a conflict this evening and he was gonna try and call in for phone, but he wasn't certain it was gonna work. And Cal always has a conflict with another group that meets the second Tuesday whenever we shift the meetings. So we have this evening trustees from the library board, Bill Hayes, Tricia Brockett, Bettina. Tricia is one of our new trustees, one of the two new trustees who joined us last month by appointment to fill a vacancy. Janie Church, John Heinselman, Kathy Meyerhoff, our intrepid. And we're missing this evening Cal Stroh and Matt Zaudi. Let's schedule conflicts from the library trust, from the library staff, we have Martha O'Hara. We have Martha, thank you. Liza Jarvey, Julian Chapman, Anna Fifehouse, and Katie Horner. And from the public, we have two candidates for the library board. We have Bonnie Schall and Jennifer Graziano. Or as a frame, it's framed, isn't it? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, Graziano is my married name, sorry.
Okay. All right, on that note, we'll jump in here. And we've called the order. Are there any additions to the agenda for this evening? If not, then we'll jump in right away to the first item on the agenda, which is the auditors' reports. We always get the report, final reports from the auditors for the fiscal year that closed out on the previous May 1st. Those generally arrive October, November. So they were included in the packet, posted on the website and is distributed to the full board. As usual, the auditor's report is pretty. There weren't any significant findings was my read through, which is always what we're looking for. To provide a little bit of more, a little bit more information on that, I will hand things off to Bettina, who is the village finance director, who does a fantastic job both for the village and for the library, of which we're a component part, and is a font of wisdom who we are very lucky to have. So Bettina, I'll turn things over to you. Would you, would it be helpful if I brought up on the, the screen here for screen share, the auditor's report, so that we could point out any items that you were mentioning?
If you want to, sure. I wasn't gonna go through each statement on the pages. I was just gonna give you a verbal overview, so I don't know if the statements would be a lot or not, but you can if you want to, sure.
No, I, yeah. The, a going through line by line would be not a great way to spend the evening. So I was just thinking that in terms of, you know, if there was a particular page with summary numbers that that might be helpful to be able to put up, so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll bring it up and worst case, worst case, it's not a very interesting backdrop.
Okay.
So auditor's report.
Okay, so first I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and provide a brief overview of the audit and answer any questions that you might have. As the years pass, the accounting firm Sickage completed this year's audit with Dan as overseeing managing partner. Next year is the last year of a three-year extension to over its period of auditing services Sickage has provided. And while municipalities are not mandated to change auditors, auditor rotation typically occurs every five years. So the village will seek bids in an RFP process to contract for auditing services beginning FY22, so not the next year's audit, but the one thereafter. The bid process may be joint with other municipalities to seek economies of scale and potential savings. Library's actual audit process is in conjunction with the village, and this year's audit was a little different due to COVID. The auditors did work remotely entirely. However, they were given remote access to all the accounting software that we share with the library, and they were able to search and retrieve any supporting documents on their own. Attachments to accounts, bail invoices are already all scanned, so they were able to view those as well as journal entry, backup and documentation. So the FY20 audit obtained the highest opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements are free from material misstatement. The components to the library's audit are basic financial statements and fund financial statements. So there are two basic financial statements in the audit, statement of net position, which you can go to Eric if you want. Statement of net position presents information about the library's assets and liabilities. If you want to go to M D N A, page two.
I'm still in the board communication letter, aren't I?
Yeah, it's fine. I'll keep talking. Maybe it'll be short then.
Page two.
The other statement is a statement of activities, which reports on how net position has changed in the fiscal year. The fund financial statements segregate accounts into, into groups based on specific activities, and the library only has really one governmental fund, and the statements focus more on the near-term flow as well as on the balance of spendable resources. So for a typical citizen, the management discussion and analysis, which are the pages that Eric has scrolled through right now, provide a great overview of the statements. Some highlights that were noted in M D N A, the library's financial condition did weaken a little as total net position of 1.970 million, million as of April 30th decreased by $83,401 or 4% from the prior year 2,054 as of April 30th, 19. So the unrestricted net position decreased by 20,931 to 115,974 from prior year 136,905. After depreciation expense, the net investments in capital assets of 1.854 million decreased 62,470 from the disposal of aged books and in excess of the cost of new materials. Another noteworthy highlight is property tax revenues of $962,776 and program revenues of $60,559 and other revenues of $2174 were less than the expenses of 1.128 million, accounting for the decrease in that position of the 83,401. So the net investments in capital assets of 1,854,622, which consisted of 1.74 in buildings, 312,000 in books and media, 347, 347,000 in land value and about 120,000 in furniture and equipment. The library's spendable resources represented by the governmental operating unrestricted fund balance increased by 20, about 27,000 or 9.09% to 330,000 from 302,000. So this balance represents about 32% of the total expenditures of 1,017,282. And the difference of 111,238 between the increases in unrestricted fund balance and the reduction in that position is attributed to the changes in capital assets. Another important factor which changed as of last year was the addition of the OPAP balance expenses and how they were represented on the financials, which created a restatement at year ending balance last year and did have an effect on the village's financials and, and the libraries, which is part of what this, some of these decreases are about. But an important snapshot of the financials is always a fund balance. So Eric, I don't know if you want to go to page three? No, I'm sorry. Page four of the M D N A, there's a slide with our chart with changes in revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance. That looks like it's part of it. There you go. So an important snapshot to the financials, financials is the fund balance, and this year's fund balance increased, which is attributed to 4.24% increase in total revenues. That's an important thing that people would look to, to see the strengths and to see where the library's headed as far as their, you know, financial stability or instability in some cases. So I know that part of this is due to your transfer back for money to fund balance. I don't remember exactly what that number was, but that would have to do with why the fund balance increased when compared to prior year. Economic factors and subsequent events also play an important part in the process. They were highlighted in M D N A as well. The library's been exempt from property tax, from the property tax exemption limitation act since 2005. With the exception of 2005 and the 2018 levy, the library has levered a property tax within the PTEL limitation. So CPI factor for 2018 was 1.9 with projected increase in total equalized value on the tax rolls, and the library utilized its expect, expected, I'm sorry, the library utilization is expected to grow. So COVID-19, as you know, has had a significant impact on most municipalities and entities in the library as well. The full extent of that impact isn't really realized and nor reflected in this financial audit, although we were pretty much in the heat of it at the time that the auditors came. So there was discussion with regard to COVID and where that would lead us next year as far as expenses and revenues and potential property tax deferments. But as we've seen, most of those deferments on the village side and the monies that have been transferred to the library from PTEL, the extent, the extended deadlines haven't really had a net effect on us. Most of that additional money came through in November, so. I haven't seen any real detriment to that for Lake Bluff. So additionally, also from last year's audit, the library roof project reduced reserves, and there was note made that there was a multi-year plan to restore fund balance in subsequent years in preparing the biannual budget going forward. So additionally, there's always the government accounting standards board, which is GASB, that rules over the accounting standards and the rules and statements and the way the financials are presented. And some, most of the new GASB rulings have little or no impact on municipalities like, like Bluff or the library. However, there is one future GASB that could have an impact that I actually mentioned to Eric earlier today, that being GASB statement 87, which refers to leases. Basically, that statement is requiring us to, if you have a lease, to depreciate it and post that depreciation to the financials, which in the past leases were kind of separate, and they were not part of the financials or nor were those leased maintenance equipment or anything else considered an asset going forward. They will be, and that will be affected in the next fiscal year after this. That's the only really GASB pronouncement that I think would have, could have an effect.
Bettina, may I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
What is our, what is the library's potential exposure to the depreciation expenses?
So that's a question that I really would, I need to look into because Eric and I discussed that a little bit, and I'm not entirely familiar with exactly what leases would fall under this category. I know that there's a lease for the historical center building, right, Eric? Am I correct?
We, yeah, there's the lease that we have for the, the space, and then there's the lease that we have for a small storage unit. But that's really it. In the past, at various points, we've leased equipment. But in recent years, we've had the funds to purchase equipment, and if you can purchase equipment, that's pretty much always going to turn out to be more cost effective.
I have a feeling that those two issues will, will have no impact at all. And if you were leasing a fleet of copiers and we needed to present those as an asset and depreciate them out as if you had purchased them, then that would be a, a different, that would have a different impact. But I'm not sure that it will have an impact, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case there was something that would impact because of a lease. And also good for future reference, as you may look to something and realize or think that a lease would potentially create cost savings in some regard, we have to remember that now we have to also depreciate it and post it to the financials.
Yeah, good insight. Thank you.
Sure.
Bettina, what was the net position from 18 to 19? Do you know that offhand or not?
Net position from 18 to 19?
Did it go down again, or is it?
So total net position in 18 was 2,138, and in 19 it was 2,053,000.
Okay.
So it did decrease. I have the sheets with calculations in front of me, about $84,000. So, and, and this year it decreased about 83,000, so close to 4% has been the running decrease in that position.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bettina regarding the audit?
This is Matt. One quick question. Apologize, I was late. The capital asset decrease, so is that a depreciation of those capital assets that's causing that 62,530? I'm on page two.
Right, I see it. I have it charted in front of me too. So yeah, FY19, it was 1.917, and now we're at 1.854 capital assets. So that is due to the cost of, or the expenses related to new materials exceeding the asset values. So that reduces the capital assets.
Okay. Okay, so that's not depreciation, that's just an imbalance in pricing versus position. Okay.
I believe so, yes.
Because I was going to say with a decrease of 84,062 of that coming from capital assets, that the kind of becomes less, less alarming to me, but the clarification.
Right.
One other question, those professional leases we are alluding to on the expense statement, does that show in the, is that, is that under contractual obligations? Is that where those would show?
They're gonna become, if there were one, it would become part of the depreciation expense number, and in the past it was never included in that because it just wasn't part of the financials. It would increase your depreciation expense.
No, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the, the leases themselves, the expense of the lease.
The expense of the lease themselves would still show your expenses, yes.
Yeah, and I'm just asking what line that's in, just for my own edification.
Oh, I, I'm not sure that there are any at this point. That's why I just brought it up as a more point of reference.
Uh, the expense of the leasing, the storage space out of building and grounds maintenance.
Oh, okay.
In the well, the, the expenses related to the maintenance of the wood building annex, which we lease out, those would impact a variety of lines, but again, it would primarily be the building and grounds maintenance, maintaining that space. So that's space is per the lease, fully our responsibility. The museum leases that for $10 a year.
Oh.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Imagine that's gonna have an impact. And then on top of that, the village provides a percentage of transfer back for grounds expenses annually, right at the end of the year. And we look at the maintenance and grounds expenses and do a calculation and a transfer of funds are returned to you. Then out of that, I mean, I can't imagine it would have an impact.
And those funds Bettina usually arrive as part of the reconciling process after the end of the fiscal year, correct?
Right, yeah, well, hopefully it'll be an April 30th entry that's booked back, yeah. And then we transfer the money.
Okay. Many additional questions for Bettina? Okay. Bettina, did we let you get through your full, your full report? Do you have anything else?
No, I was just gonna highlight the M D N A and walk through a couple of statements. And that was my, unless anybody had anything else they wanted me to specifically speak to in the audit, I can, we can go over a page or two.
I lost you there for a moment. I froze.
Oh. I said, I said no unless anyone had any additional pages they wanted to point to with some questions specific to them. I'd be happy to do that.
I think we're, I think we're pretty well set.
Okay.
So then for the last act for this item number on the agenda would be a vote to accept the auditor's reports. They're not reports that we write or change. The, a big part of the purpose of the auditor's reports is that they, we don't write them, that they're given to us by an external third. But we do vote to accept their findings. So that being the case, I would then look for a motion to accept auditor's reports for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Motion.
Is that John?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from trustee Hayes. And since it relates to finances, we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Brockett.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Heinselman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
All right, motion carries, auditor's report is accepted. Bettina, you are always welcome to hang around, though probably would prefer to get out with the evening. Thank you so much for stopping by. We're always so appreciative for everything that you do, and when you're able to take a few minutes to swing by and answer a few questions.
No problem. Thanks so much, Bettina. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you guys too. Thank you.
Yeah, have a great evening.
Hope you're all feeling better.
Yes. All right. Bettina is a really good she's really good at what she does, and she's generally very helpful as well, as well as very professional, so. I'm always happy to help. You know, sift through any of the financial information, but if at any point you do, or we do really get stuck on something, we're very fortunate that Bettina is pretty much always really happy to help and jump in and help us out. Whether that's explaining something or untangling something. Okay, on that note, our next item on the agenda would be opportunity to address the board. Do we have any interest in addressing the board from any of our members of the public or staff are present? Hearing nobody jumping forward and not seeing any emails in my mailbox from folks wanting to participate digitally, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the November 17th meeting. And I did have, as we jump over to those, one note on, on that, which is Janie, it looks like you misspelled Anna's name.
Oh, dear.
So instead of, in her last name, instead of an O, it's another A.
Oh, oh, like house, okay. Yeah.
Here, I'll I'll type it in, I'll type it in the chat for you as well, so that you can.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, Anna. I knew that. I don't know why I, I know how to.
That's okay. It, it happens all the time.
Those German names, you know?
Yeah.
It's like Meyerhoff.
Okay, any other comments, questions, corrections for the minutes for the November 17th minutes? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
Do we need to update Matt and I on the committees?
Oh, yeah, you've got.
Yeah.
Um, I put in the minutes, the note that you guys expressed interest, but I wasn't sure if we'd made that official yet, so I didn't names down. So how, do we do we actually do that at? Okay, I'm confused. I know we'll redo committees in May. But what do we do now for Tricia and Matt?
They're filling in. They're taking the place of the previous trustees or vacancies. They're actively part of those meetings now. And, and for our new people and guests and candidates, what Jamie's referring to is every May, we reelect officers for the board and we reassign committee positions, which might just be exactly the same, or, you know, we might move around a little bit, so. But Matt and Tricia would have been assigned, I think there was a little juggling of other people because we had some trustees leave.
Right.
Matt wanted finance and outreach.
I think Matt, Matt was long range and, and financial.
Oh, was he?
Yeah, I think so.
Is Matt with us? Okay, so, so you think Matt was long range and outreach?
Financial, Janie, financial and long-term planning.
Long, okay, all right. Okay, and Tricia?
And I was gonna hop on outreach and human resources.
Okay, all right, so I got that wrong. All right, so I will, is it okay with you if I just put you guys on as of this month? So when I do this month's, the meetings for this, the minutes for this meeting right now, I can put you in those committees, or do you want me to make that change?
You know, I'm unfamiliar with what the, what the procedures are, I guess, if there's a certain nomination period or anything like that, but since we've expressed the interest, I, you know, I have no objection to you putting my name on those committees and beginning the, you know, beginning that transition.
Okay, well, what I can, what I can say is it's all pretty.
It's pretty informal.
Informal.
Yeah, the, the assignment of the committee membership is, is fairly informal, which is why there isn't a line in there looking for any sort of a formal vote. The I mean, the, the committees are pretty much trying to have at least two to three for each committee. Folks that are interested and active and have skills that can be brought to those. And I don't think we've ever really had a situation where there've been so many people that wanted to be on one committee that it got to be a challenge. on one committee that it got to be a challenge. So usually what happens with the committee appointments is it's conversation as far as who's gonna be where at the start of the fiscal year and very much in keeping with the conversation as far as Tricia and Matt, where your interests would lie as far as jumping in that we had last month.
Okay, let me just clarify now that Matt's back with us, Matt, you were interested in finance and long-range planning? Those are the two you were.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I had to drop off for a minute.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay, I will, I will make sure that those are in in the corrections.
Okay.
Eric, I don't have my agenda in front of me, I'm going through these emails, I can't find it, but it's used to when I reviewed it the other day, some of the committee positions on the agenda, you still had Scott for something, so just for, for the January agenda, let's be sure everything is up to date. I could be wrong about that, but.
I think I had Scott.
Oh yeah, I did.
Yeah.
You're right, you're right, I gotta get those updated, we'll do. Okay, I think that covers the minutes, do we have the minutes as amended?
I still moved.
Second.
Motion from Kathy, second from all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Okay. That takes us up to the financial reports which I had sent out this afternoon. And these are bring them up on the screen here. Pretty straightforward. As Bettina noted and as we've been watching over the past few months, despite the deferral available to property.
Think you're back, Eric. Maybe not.
I think Eric got frozen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's frozen.
Well, it says that I'm the host now, so.
Oh, hi Martha.
Or make Glaze's account a co-host, just in case.
Oh, okay.
There you are.
There we go.
Brief.
My, my internet cut out there for, for a minute. So, okay, we were talking about financial reports, sorry about that. So property tax revenue, we got another dose of $30,000 that arrived, we're now up to within 60,000 of what we had asked for in the levy, so continuing to keep an eye on that. We haven't, didn't have too many big expenses that factored in over the past month, we don't usually have a lot of expenses that are scheduled for November, December, those are usually quieter months budgetarily. And as always with this thrilling year of 2020, we continue to try to be careful in expenses, just because there are so many unknowns and some of the knowns such as that we know we're not going to be getting any passport revenue are not necessarily favorable, so as with previous months, we're below expenses as far as where we were last year. 60,000 versus the 73,000, we had expended the same month last year in 2019. We continue to be purposefully running well below expenses for versus last year. Hopefully that will provide us with an extra soft landing at the end of the fiscal year on April 30th, but you know, there's always seems to be a surprise around the corner in this year, so definitely the right move to be stepping carefully with our finances this year. So, not too many not too much new or exciting in the financial reports here that I would really draw attention or highlight, any questions? Before we move on. If not, I would look for a move.
Motion approved.
Motion from Trustee Zaudi, and second?
A second.
And second from Trustee Hayes. Since it's money, we'll do a roll call vote again.
You just fro, you just froze, Karik.
Did I? Did I freeze?
If you were asking for, you were just asking for a roll call, then it all went.
Yeah, oh, gosh, I'm having a great, I'm having a great internet evening here, aren't I? Oh, AT&amp;T. Trustee Brockett.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinseman.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
All right, carries unanimously. Takes us over to the checks. And these are again, pretty straightforward. Were sent out and distributed earlier this afternoon.
Eric?
I would, yes.
Can you give me the numbers?
Oh, yes, 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 you know, I had those written down specifically for you, completely forgot to to do that. Here, it's 14, 5, 7, 4, 14, 5, 7, 6, and then 14, 5, 7, 8 to 14, 6, 0, 4. I will post those in the chat as well.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Um. One item that I would draw quick attention to on the checks is the expenses related to Canopy. Those continue to run higher than we budgeted for, that is intentional. With the current obstacles in place to, for a lot of patrons in accessing our physical collections in the same and they would have done in a normal year, we've increased our support for the digital resources. So the number of monthly checkouts for Canopy as well as Hoopla remain doubled. So if you feel like you're seeing those expenses showing up more frequently in the check reports, you are. And that's according to plan, taking some of the expenses that were funds that we're not spending elsewhere, such as not needing as frequent a cleaning for much of the year, because we haven't had a public coming in, and shifting that towards digital resources when those have been seen a lot of, as you would expect, additional interest.
Eric, what's the Murphy and Miller one?
They are our HVAC maintenance company.
Okay.
So that would be a, the quarterly payment for yeah, the, the maintenance contract that we have with them.
Eric, do Canopy or Overdrive or Media Ball, I don't know if we use them, do they ever have any promotions or are they doing anything during this period, presumably when their business is going gangbusters, to help libraries like us?
They did initially, there were some promotions that they, that they did. Overdrive, for instance, had unlimited checkouts for the Harry Potter books. But after the first month or two, March, April and a bit into May, haven't really seen a lot in the way of promotions, spend more business as usual. Yeah, Anna, if you've seen, if you've seen additional promotions that have come up, please feel free, jump in.
Um, yeah, initially, it was a lot of the large publishing companies, I manage our Overdrive collection. And essentially what many of them did was they explored different licensing options. Penguin Random House, for example, is currently offering a half license where libraries can purchase a copy of a title for half the amount of time for half the price, which allows us to buy more copies that are available right now. And they have continued that, they have not taken that away. Several Overdrives really been pushing to get what they call their cost per circ licenses built up and more publishers participating, essentially that is a model like Hoopla and Canopy where we pay per checkout. And we, we're not previously using cost per circ, but we are now, and it's been really great for stretching our funds to help with the increased demand for ebooks right now.
Thank you for being on top of that. That, that was kind of my next question was, are there any opportunities here, especially given that it looks like our revenues will come in where expected and from a tax standpoint, we're running under budget to maybe bulk up if there are any, you know, like you mentioned, Harry Potter or genres or areas that we might want to address, or we anticipate seeing increased demand?
Currently, we are intentionally overspending the Overdrive budget, we went through several discussions of how much we really wanted to put towards that. I believe we're at 20,000 for this fiscal year is our budget at this point, I believe the original one was 17. Does that sound right, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, we are also let's see, yeah, Hoopla and Campy are the two where we've increased. We, the per capita grant which Eric mentioned last month, the one for 20, I get my calendar years confused, but the one that we already had, the remaining, most of the remaining money went towards Overdrive purchasing in April, May and June. And we are looking to again dedicate that to e-resources.
Yeah, the, the grant when we wrote it was primarily focused on bolstering our e-resources, which is particularly helpful now that we received the funds here within the last month or two. So usually we shifted most of those funds towards Overdrive and developing collection in the past few years. Will be certainly putting a big chunk of them towards that again this year, though, will also be, I think, shifting some funds to support the additional spending that we're doing with Hoopla in particular.
Okay.
Eric or Anna, when you're, when you're talking about the spending to Overdrive, is that also Libby or is Libby a separate line? How, and Hoopla, is that a third line or?
They're all part of the same budget line.
Okay, but in terms of product?
They're separate vendors, so we have three sources for ebooks and the audiobooks. We have the, we have Overdrive, which is the My Media Mall slash Libby. Libby is an app, basically for accessing the My Media Mall collection, which is developed by consortium in the area. Canopy is one that we ourselves subscribe to, as is the, oh, my mind is gonna blank, the E-Read Illinois. Is that right, Anna?
360, yeah.
Yeah, with access 360 from.
Consortium, yeah.
And that's another Illinois-wide consortium that we are part of. So those are, those are the three. The
And Hoopla.
Subscription, the subscription fees come from the databases. And the and then the, the per title costs come from the ebook and the audiobook.
So, from a patron's point of view, if I'm looking for something, I'm, I'm using Overdrive, I'm getting more response lately from Libby in terms of availability. And I have an app for both, I guess, am I supposed to have additional apps, as you get a different additional vendors, or does this automatically work on the behalf of patrons?
So Overdrive, where I purchase individual titles, the main app now is Libby, there is the former Overdrive app, but they aren't really updating it much anymore. They're putting all of their strength into Libby, which is more user-friendly.
Okay.
Hoopla has its own app, as does E-Read Illinois, is accessed through the Access 360 app, which is developed by Baker and Taylor. So yes, from a patron standpoint, if you wanted a book from Hoopla, you would need their app, you couldn't access it through Libby.
So if you're looking for a brand new, let's say the, the, what is it, the Daughters of Yalta, it just came out, it's a real popular book. Would it be wise for a patron to go to several of these different apps?
Yes.
It's not like they don't feed one to another, the patron would have to look into all of them, okay, all right, thanks, I didn't know that, thank you.
Yeah, no, there, we've heard some there, there are some kind of union catalogs that are in the works that are aiming to provide a single access point for ebooks and the audiobooks across databases, but there isn't one that's out yet, unfortunately, so you do need to search the individual databases.
That, that's a great point from Kathy, is in terms of searching and outreach, I think that it may be helpful on the website or somewhere to the public to provide like a very brief, you know, pictorial or graph to say, here's our different apps, here's how, here's what you can get from them. And make it very easy for the patron to say, you know, to, to be able to navigate where they should go, why they should go there. Just even if you refresh it, you know, twice a year, it might be helpful. I agree.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah. Finding ways to improve and step up the outreach and the profile and awareness of the digital resources that we have to offer, the full scope is definitely something that we've have been discussing a lot and really want to continue to do more of, so yeah.
Oh yeah, and I mean, it's new for everyone, so you know, readers who, you know, beforehand would come into the library and physically check out books, they're new at navigating this too, and so that might just be an added service that we could offer.
So Anna, when titles are put, or you, you're buying titles in there, the more money you put in, do you, do you get more copies of something? And then do you constantly have to be reducing the amount of copies that are available and increasing them on new things?
Not exactly, it's, it's lovelily complicated.
Okay.
Basically, there's two models, one is the cost per circ, which functions like Hoopla, so I just click a button that says add this title. And if a patron checks it out, we get charged per checkout. And then I can click that button to revoke the title. Right now I'm mostly revoking that once all of the holds have been filled, so that we're not putting, we have a monthly budget. For those titles. And once that expires for the month, people have to wait for the next month to check something out. The rest and the majority of the budget goes towards licensed copies, which depending on the publisher could be a permanent license. Or more often, it's a two-year license or a twenty-six checkout license. So I purchased one copy and it's like a physical book. Only one person can check it out. And after either two years or twenty-six checkouts, I would have to purchase a new copy. I can purchase multiple copies. Typically, we won't purchase more than maybe three copies of an ebook because of the expense. So.
Okay, no, thank you.
Is Hoopla H O O P L A?
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, one more thought to follow up on Tricia's idea. Perhaps Erica could pass this maybe along between. Anna and Carol, maybe a program on this because this, quite some time ago, we started digital lending. We had, I know Martha was giving us tutorials, small groups, they were really kind of hysterical when you look back on them now with. Technology fading in and out and nobody understanding the jargon at all, but. For instance, I just learned that I have two apps, Overdrive Drive and Libby, and apparently I don't need both of them. So maybe a program. On digital borrowing because it's our biggest lending area. And also digital resources, which I, Eric and I have talked, because I've been trying to explore just because I have the time to do it. And it's pretty amazing what we have and what's available, which is I know being underused because I look at statistics. So somehow. You know, making it available, expanding it to people. If some people have the time to really look into it right now, it might be ideal.
We'll take a look.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions on, on checks? If not, then I would look for a motion to approve. Let me. Then I posted the, the check range there in chat as well, Janie. That's approval for checks fourteen five seven four, fourteen five seven six, fourteen five seven eight through fourteen six oh four. Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion for Matt. Do we have a second?
Get our new people in there.
Okay, and. Do the roll call vote. Trustee Brockett.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinselman.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Excellent. Okay. Then that will take us up to committee reports. So we did not have any committees that met over the past month. Short month with meeting on the second week in December. In addition to having the holiday in between. For any of the committee chairs, does anyone have anything that they would like to jump in and report? Okay, not hearing anything, then we'll move on to. New business, which we don't have any new business for, for this meeting. Only upcoming new business that I would draw attention to is that. The next month here that the finance committee will begin a meeting regarding setting the budget for the next fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Which will be the budget that goes into effect, May first, twenty twenty-one. So that'll be a process that's getting underway. But isn't on the agenda. Here, don't really have anything to report as far as the fundraising. I am working on. A end of the year statement or the. For the foundation to let the folks that have donated to that entity in the past know that. We're still. Very much a going concern and have continued to work and put together plans and are still very much planning to do. Some big things at the library, just to keep everybody updated. Periodically have discussed with John here and unfortunately, the, the sense has been that. As, as you would expect, not necessarily really a great climate for capital fundraising at the moment. John, did you have?
Do, do we get a report from the friends as how their year-end mailing did?
We do. But we don't usually get that until the start of the new year.
Next month, okay.
Yeah, John, I've got their, let me see if it's. I don't think they would be compiling that, especially since they're meeting less frequently. You just like, because their letter is dated November first, so I would guess at least the end of the year before they would have that.
They'll have some numbers at, at the January meeting, but probably won't have a really clear picture as far as how they did until they meet. Again, I think after that, which is either April or March.
I think it's April.
April. Sounds right.
Eric, as far as the foundation is concerned, since that's a five oh one C three, are they required? To do a, a year-end report at the end of the calendar year every year?
The foundation is required to do a year, a fiscal year-end report for the, the state and for the IRS.
Okay, so, so. Their fiscal year is the same as our fiscal year?
You said foundation, did you mean friends?
No, I mean foundation.
Oh, the foundation, yeah. The foundation's fiscal year is, is purposefully set to match the libraries.
Okay. Alright, so I'm just wondering why, why you're working on the end of your statement?
Oh, um, well.
Mind if I jump in here?
I'm just curious.
Fire away.
Because we have our, we have a primary donor at this point and they require, they, they request, they're actually. Their donation is. A January donation, so they require or request an annual report prior to that renewed pledge. So. So we've sort of begun to use that December as an opportunity to reflect and to prepare a report, which is presented to them in January. And then it would be available to any additional donors as the year goes on.
Yeah, it's communication to, to donors versus filing requirements.
Gotcha, okay.
But yeah, we, we had the one donor that. Was looking at it and then we met and discussed and said, you know, this is a great idea. We should just do this for all of our great donors. Oh, any additional questions regarding the. Capital campaign before we jump over to the director's report? Okay, not hearing anything. Couple items to add on the, the director's report. The automatic door openers for the library's entrance and the interior doors going into the library from the foyer. Are currently in the process of being replaced. The ones on the interior doors had failed and not been operable for a bit. Already, and the ones on the main entrance had not really been satisfactory. If you've, if you're a regular library user, then it's possible at some point you've had the. Experience of not quite getting through those doors fast enough and they kind of squish you. If you aren't moving quick enough and there, there really isn't. Any way, unfortunately, with the openers that we had to adjust the tension. So you can't make them open. More softly or slower or faster or anything like that. So swapping both sets out. The new ones that are going in have the ability to adjust the tension so that we can change that if we think it's. Going too fast, too slow. And they also have the ability to recognize when they meet resistance. Or when there's movement in the doorway and then they will stop trying to close. Which I think is a great good thing. I know my staff is very, very excited. So folks that are not a fan of the door openers. One of those be finished?
They're finished.
Oh, it's done now.
Yeah.
They were out earlier today. I just wasn't sure if they finished. They did get done?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. They're done. Yeah, they were, they were out today. I just wasn't sure if they were done, but it sounds like they are, which is good. Uh, we're in the process of selecting a new elevator maintenance company or previous vendor for elevator maintenance was bought out. And that relationship as a result became. More uncertain than we wanted it to be. So we're getting ourselves into a. New contract that we can be confident isn't about to be renegotiated and it's something wildly different with a different vendor. I'm sorry to report, we're also looking at the very start of looking for a new janitorial service. And putting out a bid request for that since it'll be a more sizable contract. We've been with Crystal Cleaning for the last seven years and generally we've been pretty happy. They've provided better service overall during that time. One sec. Baby woke up. He was sleeping so nice. Okay.
It's also sad about crystal maintenance.
He's very sad about crystal maintenance, I guess. You know, overall, over the last seven years, they've provided better service at a much lower cost than our previous vendor. But. Over the past several months, they've. Service has just really dropped off and they've not really been very responsive. About that, so. You know, particularly for a contract that we haven't put out to bid in a while. You know, we're looking at going and getting out there and seeing what's available. Do like to try and bid contracts on a somewhat regular basis to make sure that. We are getting the best service at the best price for the community. We've got some great holiday decorations that have been going up outside the library. We've got some more that are going to be going up in addition to the story walk. The story walk is amazing. If you have not had a chance to check that out. I encourage you to do so. Before the meeting started, Jillian was telling me how some of the store owners in downtown Lake Bluff were reporting that they. Had some folks that were coming in from out of town. To, to walk through that and it sounds like. Remind me, is it Suzy Swirl, Jillian? It sold out of the, the Christmas ice cream already. So. That was incredibly well done. Great partnership with businesses in the downtown there with the chamber. Jillian deserves a lot of credit for her work on that and getting that into place.
And Regina.
With a lot of good help from Regina. Regina's. Does our story times. So she's. Very knowledgeable on the, the picture books as well as a lot of other things with youth services.
Kudos to both of you. Jillian, is that? Is it just in town by, around the library or are there businesses out west that are participating in it too?
Um, the idea is that you would physically walk. So the, it starts at Lake Bluff Library and then it continues west down Scranton Ave to center. So it's Bluffington's Leggy Bird Design Salon on the Bluff Prairie Espresso. Hub and Cycle Bonk. We have an additional window space. It's actually in a stairwell to nowhere. There was some sort of renovation at some point where we have a doorway that we have access to in a window. That shows showcase library programming. So after Hub and Cycle, we have a spreadsheet in Floatstone. Therapy and then we have three at, well, we have two at Innivazi and one at Other Door. And then it continues down to the Clockworks and Twigs Florist and then to Village Hall.
Nice. So you said something about Suzy Swirl.
Suzy Swirl, so we have partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to put this together and she, Joanna Rollick helped make the initial. Contact with the local businesses and she had asked a bunch of the other businesses in, in the area if they'd be willing to participate. For It's a Wonderful Life and using the snowman theme as a way to sort of contribute, either if they're doing like coupons or deals that might. Coordinate with the snowman at night. And Suzy Swirl was able to partner with Other Door and they set up a table in the second room of the Other Door. With their frozen desserts on site during It's a Wonderful Life and they sold out. They sold out completely by like three thirty, four PM, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my family really enjoyed it. We got our hot cider and walked through the story walk and I think there's a real opportunity there to continue. To bring the stories and the books outside for families and the added partnership with the community is fantastic. I think, you know, that, that's what makes Lake Bluff so special. You know, I could, I could see this with the Fourth of July. I could see this with a lot of. Things that, that gets everybody outside and enjoying all the things that we have to offer here. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, Lake Forest Bank and Trust also participated by having a snowman ice sculpture in the center square. I think that was it. Out of the businesses that, that participated in it. Oh, Lake Forest Bookstore, they had a table at Floatstone Therapy. From two to five PM and they sold from the amount that I had heard was fifteen books of Snowman at Night. During It's Wonderful Life.
Nice.
Thank you, Jillian. So it was really good to be able to do that here at the, at the end of the year. I, I know that there have been quite a few outreach opportunities that Jillian had, you know. Gotten us started on, was very excited about that we were on staff, all very excited about that. Didn't really. A chance to come to fruition here in, in twenty twenty because of the pandemic. So it's, it's wonderful to be. Have this high note at the end of the year on outreach. Okay, and speaking of our friend COVID nineteen. That is a situation that I am continuing to monitor. That is a regular topic of discussion at our staff meetings. So the numbers, if you've been following them over the past few weeks, for at least the state of Illinois have been. Looking a bit better, though they continue to be higher than where. There, there's still the, the metric marks that are, that are set that ultimately had triggered. The increased restrictions. So they're still, they're better, but they're still pretty high. In. Regular meetings with the other library directors here on the North Shore, most recently yesterday on Monday. Most libraries are thinking in terms of. Most libraries are, uh, thinking in terms of. Um, sticking with the curbside service, which, um, we're pretty much all, uh, providing at this juncture. Sticking with that model through, um, the holidays and, um. Then, um, reopening the physical space again soonest mid-January. And I would say, though we haven't made any announcements to that effect, that that's. Most likely the, the model that will, um, end up following as well. Just in terms of wanting to be able to provide consistent service, uh, the, the challenges in, in terms of being able to. You know, really respond quickly, jumping back and forth as we have had to do at times, um, in service during the holiday season. And just some of the, the challenges that we were already encountering, um, before we switch back to curbside service in terms of. Uh, guaranteeing. You know, regularly staffed and, um, clean space at the library, uh, with. There's a lot of COVID out there and, you know, people were just regularly starting to. Come into contact with it and it was causing a lot of troubles with scheduling and keeping us open. Curbside's a lot easier to maintain from that, um, perspective, so. Most likely then unless something unexpected changes in terms of the trend, um, that will. Uh, probably be the course that we're on there. Stick with the curbside, um, and enhance that as much as we feel that we can with additional services and hours. Through the holidays. And then get into early to mid-January and reevaluate at that point. Fingers crossed. Things are going well enough, we can look towards, um, getting the physical space, uh, reopen again. Um, I would love to be, um, in a position to do that in the start of the new year. So, uh, that's a brief rundown as far as where we're at.
Well, I do have to say I've been using curbside quite a bit and reserving a lot of books and using the, our digital collection quite a bit. And I'm, I'm very impressed with the way it's working and, um, your curbside is. Instead of a thirty-six hour turnaround, you do something at night and request it and then you gotta comment the next day and you reserve for the day after that. Pick it up and, you know, and, and books are coming through smoothly. Uh, the system is just working very, very well.
It is, and staff deserves a lot of credit for that. Martha O'Hara done a great job, uh, particularly with getting the, um. Spring share set up and implement. For, uh, scheduling of appointments. Katie done a fantastic job, uh, as, as far as working out the, the kinks and, uh. Procedure for how we handle things and has really. You know, in addition to getting things set up very, handled very flexibly. The, the procedure so that we've been able to start handling things like same-day requests, uh, and just the, the whole team in general, um, Eliza, Jillian. Anna Laurent deserve a lot of credit for, you know, pitching in and, and helping with the, the development of all that planning. So it's been, twenty twenty's been an adventure, um, you know, from, from March onwards, it's been. You know, we can reinvent library service. So I'm thrilled to report that our staff has been up to the task.
Yeah, I've, I've been very impressed as well, just from my own utilization. I, my only comment, and I hate to even say it, but I think it might be helpful, um, is to post some kind of time period of when the crack. Grab and go crafts will be available.
It should be always available. Have you had difficulty with that?
Um, yeah, but just one time, so that's why I'm just saying it's probably an anomaly, but maybe.
We probably don't always catch it with.
Yeah.
In a couple of minutes when they run out, but they should be ideally always there.
Yeah, yeah.
And please call us if you notice that and we'll run one out to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eliza.
I picked up that snowman yesterday, Eliza. It was adorable. I, I mean, I don't usually go crazy for crafts.
Should be snowmen for the month of December for our, uh, for our story walk.
As cute as could be, all the little cutouts. I mean, thank you, that, there's a lot of effort putting into do that over and over again. I know as a former teacher. You can get tired of doing those things over and over again, so I very much appreciate it. Starling.
Eric, do we get any, um, formal feedback on curbside pickup? I mean, I know, a- a- anecdotally, I think everyone's experience here has been great. I, I can speak to our experience as well, so kudos to the staff. I just wondered if there's any, any things we need to be aware of or, or areas to expand or improve or what have you.
Martha can jump. It looks like she's getting ready to. We did a, uh, on-the-fly patron satisfaction survey, uh, towards the end of the summer, start of the fall. And we're probably getting up towards a situation where we could probably ask for some more feedback and solicit. Usually you don't want to ask like too back-to-back. You want to take the information, do something with it, show people that you've done something with it and then. You know, then ask again. Um, but Martha, do you want to talk a bit about the, uh, information that we got back?
Um, well, we do have the ability with Spring Share. We can, um. Set it up so that it sends people a survey afterward, um, so we, that is feedback that we could have the possibility to collect. I think it's something that initially we wanted to hold off on just to avoid overwhelming people with, um, emails from us. So, I, and that's something that we could look into if, um, if we want to get more, more feedback on that. That's a feature that's built into. Libcal, um, and we could actually, we could do it for programs too, um, that's on the list of, um. Things to explore, um, so that's something that we could do if, if it's of interest.
Now Martha, that just reminds me, are we, I'm not suggesting we do this by any means, but are we on the schedule? It was sort of an every other year scheduled to do the formal survey.
Yeah, that was supposed to happen this summer, um.
Okay, obviously it's not gonna happen for quite some time, but I, I sort of thought that we were, that would have been our schedule, right?
It, yeah, it was going to, um, it was going to be from June first through August thirty-first and, um. We, well, for a variety of reasons, but also we felt like it wouldn't be great to be like, so what do you think about the services that you can't access right now? Um, or many of them anyway, um, so.
It started June, we were still mostly completely closed, so we hadn't even kickstarted curbside yet at that point, so it was kind of.
It didn't even occur to me until just recently that I thought we, that would have been our cycle. It, whenever we get around to it, you know, we've been through a period of change and reflection and it could be worthwhile when the time comes. But I'm not suggesting we're anywhere near there.
And for, for our, our new trustees, um, Kathy's referring to a, uh, every two years we do a big. Patron satisfaction survey, uh, where we, three months, um, ask a number of questions of. Uh, community members, how they're using the library, what they would like to see, um, you know, how. We might improve the library, what would be useful to the community. And then Martha digests all the statistics into a very useful report that helps us. Inform what, uh, we're doing in terms of long-range and strategic planning.
Previous reports are available on the website too, if you are interested in them.
Yes. Okay, and that pretty much, um, brings to an conclusion the director's report. Do we have any other items for discussion? Otherwise I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion from John, any second. Second from Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-three PM.
Goodnight.
Hey.
Bye.
Goodnight, everybody.
Bye, everybody.